Welcome to another meeting of the Lorain County Commissioners, broadcast exclusively on your Lorain County Community College Education Station. The Lorain County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorain County Administration Building, located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alaria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Good morning, everyone. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Today's quote is, "Too often we enjoy the comfort of opinion without the discomfort of thought." John F. Kennedy. So, Madam Clerk?
Okay, we have no scheduled appointments this morning under resolutions. I had a motion to approve the Job and Family Services bills for payment.
So moved.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Support?
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments this morning. Requisitions?
So moved.
So moved.
She-- Mrs. Blair moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
To authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorain County Commissioners.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Under Commissioners, item number 10, in the resolution to encourage KPS management to withdraw termination letters and resolve issues through discussions with the United States Steel Workers of America, this action would show good faith between KPS management, reflecting the modified labor agreement prepared by the USWA. The county's longstanding partnership must be preserved through mutual respect and a sense of fairness to both sides. Board of Commissioners continue to support the steel industry in the same manner as in the past.
I believe Larry Einthell is here, maybe to speak. Would you like to speak, Larry?
Okay.
I just want to take a brief moment to share with you what we're experiencing. You know, the community has been very supportive on our attempt to keep those steel mill jobs open in Lorain. The city of Lorain has helped to tax abatements. And the county through the use of American-made steel on the county projects. And I know two of the Commissioners attended the bus trip that we took to Washington, Commissioner Blair and Commissioner Vassy. And that was a grueling trip. It was a 10-hour bus ride down there. And we attempted to get President Bush's attention on the illegal imports, and we were successful. He did put some restrictions on that. Our members have also made sacrifices through recent wage concessions and benefit reductions on there. We have a new owner. RTI was not successful in surviving. We have a new owner. We do have a collective bargaining agreement. It does have some spelled-out hiring agreements on there. The new owner has hired a management group to help them through this transition. Just happens to be the same management group that we dealt with with the previous company. Their approach has been to send out letters to those employees that they plan on hiring and to those employees that they plan on terminating. Their approach is a very brutal approach. Those letters are sent out to workers, some workers that have 30-some years with the company. Letters were sent out for those that have--that are out of work on an illness-type leave, on an injury-type leave, work-related type leave. So their intentions are not to hire anyone that has any illness or injury presently, totally going against what we consider the agreement on how they should hire. And we'll settle that issue through the proper process, and that's going to be through the grievance and arbitration process on there. But the reason we're here today is we wanted to share with you that there's always been a partnership between the company, the union, and the community, and the county on trying to save those jobs in Lorain. And I think every one of us have done our part. Like I said, I commend the Commissioners for doing your part on the resolution on American-made steel on county projects, attending the bus trip. Workers have done it through their sacrifices and wages and benefits on there. So everybody's played a role in it. We need this new owner to realize how important these jobs are to the community. And this resolution just basically reinforces that partnership between the three of us on there. And we ask for your encouragement that the parties get together and are able to work out these differences. And let's show a little humanity and not take this brutal approach on how this transition's going to take place. So I would ask that the Commissioners support this resolution.
Thank you.
Larry, I have a question. You said that the letters were sent out not to hire. What about those people that are already working?
Yes, they sent letters out to those that are to be hired, those that are not to be hired. They found a lot of mistakes in their, like, re-sending letters out, and there's total confusion out in the workplace. It actually has workers kind of like divided on who's to be hired, who's not. There's not much logic to their process. It's subjective. It's managers who thinks, who has more ability than someone else, and you get into all that. But we have a very clean letter of an agreement on how to be hired. And it basically states those that are presently employees of RTI as of the acquisition date of the new company, which should be either today or tomorrow, those that are employees are to be hired. So the transition management group in there wants to broaden their interpretation of that to allow them not to hire anyone that's not presently able to work, and that's those that may be on a sick leave status or a worker's comp status. And also senior employees that may have not been given the opportunity in the past to learn other particular jobs because they were needed somewhere else. They want to basically hold that against them. So it's dividing the workers, and I'm sure when the workers are divided, it gets divided into the community. And we don't need a new employer to come in. And we're not even sure if they're an investment group. We're not even sure at this point in time if they actually know how brutal the management group that they hired to handle this transition, what approach it'd taken, if they're even aware of that. And we're trying to get some public support through you, the county, through the Commissioners, and through the city of Lorain on there, and let this investment group be aware of that these jobs are important to the city, to the county, to the workers on there. And we can find a better way to get through this transition. We've all made sacrifices. We all felt the pain. And we can't afford to let this management group come in here and expand on this agreement. Really what should be affected is maybe 65 jobs being eliminated through--they bought the whole Lorain operation except one part of it, and it's called a 12-inch bar mill that has approximately 65 workers associated with that particular operation. They want to expand it to not only not hire 65, they want to take it between 300 and 400 workers by singling out, like I say, workers that's on sick leave or worker's comp, and then eliminate senior workers that maybe didn't learn as many jobs as other workers. So you may have a worker with two years and a worker with 31 years being terminated on there. So it's a shame we got to go through this process. We would like some community support to encourage the new owners that let's find a way and sit down and do this in a humane manner instead of taking this brutal approach.
So what you really mean by hire is just transfer to the new company?
Yeah, we have an agreement that the new owners will hire the existing employees with the exception of those from the facility not acquired. That's only 65 jobs. They've taken that and sent out close to 400 letters to workers telling them they're not going to be hired.
Yeah, I don't think we can stress enough how important those jobs are, because without jobs like that, the retail industry can't get along. Now we're seeing Ames closing down another 100 jobs. And it's just gonna--just domino. I mean, I don't know how we can stress to them. The resolution stresses it, but it just doesn't seem to stress it enough how important our manufacturing jobs are. And the steel workers in Lorain County, that's one of our strongest--used to be one of our strongest manufacturing companies.
And in the steel industry, and I'm sure in other industries, there's a tendency to keep the employment levels down and use overtime to pick up the slack. In our steel mill, right now, there's ungodly hours of forced overtime when really you should be hiring more workers and give those workers a normal workday. I mean, we've had workers for over two years on 10- and 12-hour shifts in certain areas on there that want some relief. So there is not the need to downsize the operations to 300 or 400 workers. We could actually eliminate some of this forced overtime that's taking place. But I'm here really for this resolution, just to point out the brutal approach that's being taken with disregard to those that were injured in the workplace, those are out on an illness, and these 30-year service workers that receive these letters. It's not--it's in violation of our agreement. And like I say, we'll take it through the normal channels, through the arbitration process. But since we've had this partnership in the past with the city, the county, the union, the company, the new employees need to be aware of that they need to take a second look at how their transitional management group is interpreting the agreements we have and give us an opportunity to sit down and try to work out a better approach to this. This company is not going to survive, this new company. And it's an investment group. It's not going to survive if that's the starting-out approach, because even if you're one of the fortunate ones to be hired, for instance, myself, I have a brother that works in there, and he has a seniority to stay, but they're going to use ability and push him out. So even though you may be one of the fortunate ones to work, you're either going to have a relative or a friend that's not being treated fairly, and that works into the morale of the workers on there. So if this is going to be a smart company, they should take this transition in a positive approach and not start out on the wrong foot. So any assistance, and we're asking for assistance through this resolution at this point in time, we feel it'd be beneficial for our cause.
Are you going to need a letter before you leave today? Because it sounds like you're doing it now, because a lot of times we don't sign them until after the meeting.
Well, as soon as it's convenient for you to sign it.
You're going to need it when you go back, so. The one we have has a stamped date on it. I don't think it's the one you'd want to have, so. That's what I'm saying. Do you think we can get a cleaner document? We could sign it right now for you.
Trace could prepare.
Is she? Okay, if you could do that.
Okay. Okay, I would so move. And if there's anything else we can do, please don't hesitate.
And I appreciate your help in the past on trying to save those jobs in Lorain. Thank you.
All I can say is good luck.
Thank you.
Did I hear? I'm sorry. Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Item number 11, a resolution providing for the guarantee of the payment of principal and interest by Lorain County on the issuance and sale of bonds by the Lorain County Port Authority for the benefit of the Lorain County Visitors Bureau Incorporated. The Port Authority plans to issue up to $1,200,000 in maximum aggregate principal amount of bonds for the purpose of, one, the acquisition, construction, improvement, equipping, and furnishing of a new headquarters for the Lorain County Visitors Bureau Incorporated; and, two, the payment of the cost of issuance related thereto.
Mr. Cordez, do you have comments on item number 11?
This is merely a housekeeping resolution. The previous resolution that was passed by the board on this issue did not contain a sufficient guarantee. The way it was worded, it in effect made no guarantee to secure the bonds. This resolution is one that is required by the Bond Rating Group, Fitch's, to be able to secure financing for the Visitors Bureau. It won't count against our GO, and the only thing that's being pledged is non-taxable revenues. In addition, there's a--the way it's numbered, the first income that will be tapped to pay the debt service should the Visitors Bureau fail to do so would be the transient guest tax. And that's why the resolution is drafted the way it is.
Do they generate enough?
Oh, yes, Commissioner. They generate about a half a million dollars a year. John, you can jump in on that figure. About $450,000? There's plenty of money to pay the debt service. We collect that money for them, and then we disperse it to them. So if there's any problems, we'll make--we'll collect the allocation from them and make the payment to the debt service before we send any funds to them. So there's really no downside to the county whatsoever.
All right, because that's kind of scary, the county guaranteeing this money.
I don't think that we would have to really take a serious look at it if we weren't collecting their revenue for them and dispersing it to them. Once--in the future, you may see different things like this that are used for economic development and incentive to get things moving in the county.
So, excuse me, Jim, but what I think I'm hearing you say is because we collect it, we can keep it?
Well, we can pay the debt service on the bond.
But I mean, keep it to pay the debt service.
Yeah, pays that first before you pay the other expenses.
Right, we would disperse--
We have control over--
Yes, yes.
How the money is used.
Yes. Under the code, it has to be used for the Visitors Bureau purposes or Convention Center purposes, and paying that debt service would certainly fit into the definition of that purpose.
Okay. Ms. Chairman, also move. You don't want to second it? I'll take my chances and second it.
Discussion? More discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Excuse me. If I may, I have nothing about this particular thing. It's just that as I have been driving up Route 58 and seen the proposed location for that center, I find myself a little puzzled, and I wondered, not knowing any of the background on it, why it happens to be in what seems to me not a very central location.
Is there anyone here from the Visitors Bureau?
Yes, Commissioner Vassy, I am.
Oh. And you're voting on this? Whoopsie.
Well, I think that's part of my job. I am a member of the Visitors Bureau because I am a Commissioner, and I'm the Commissioner that serves on this board. In a nutshell, the Visitors Bureau has, I think for over the past 10 years, been looking for a permanent home, and they had a committee. The Visitors Bureau has a Board of Directors, and they had a committee that went out and looked at various sites over a long period of time and had much discussion. And I think the criteria that the board determined was that they wanted it in the corridor on Route 58, and they were given some specificity about where to look for. And this is the location that they finally narrowed it down to. But it's been a long, long process, several years. I can certainly give you more information, but that's kind of a synopsis in a nutshell.
Okay. Item number 12, I'd like to publish the notice in the Chronicle Telegraph and Morning Journal on August 18, 2002, for a public hearing on the county tax budget for fiscal year 2003, to be held in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room on Thursday, August 29, 2002, at 11 a.m. All citizens are invited to attend.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
No, it's not on the budget. That's on the line. You're talking about here in Congress? No, not. It's a Tuesday.
27.
Tuesday. What day is this? It's a Thursday.
27.
27 this year.
Okay. Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Okay, under Children and Families Council, item number 13, to authorize the Executive Director of the Children and Families Council to apply for, accept, and enter into contracts for the provision of services under the terms of the Abstinence Education Program for the Ohio Department of Health.
Also move. I'll second for the--
Discussion?
Discussion. I have a problem with enter into the contracts, because it's my concern that the Commissioners are the only ones that can enter into contracts. How can we transfer this authority? Jerry?
I suppose if you want to reword that into-- The contract would eventually come back here. Is that right, Juan?
It doesn't have to, though, Jerry, with this wording. We're authorizing them to enter into the contract. Is this a specific program that we're working on, Mr. Cordez? Yeah, maybe negotiate.
Yeah, we're applying for a grant right now for these funds. Is that correct, Mr. Crespo? So at this juncture, we really need a resolution authorizing us to apply for the grant, and then we can deal with the services once the grant's approved and readdress this issue on future dates. So I would request that we modify the resolution to approve and authorize the Executive Director of Children and Family First Council to apply for the grants for the Abstinence Education Program.
Okay, I will withdraw my--
I'll amend the motion just to read, "to apply for contract." What did you say? To apply for--
Just take out "accept and enter into contract." Just strike that.
To apply for the services, okay.
Apply for--
Agreed.
The provisions of services.
Okay, is that agreeable with you then?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Blair?
Much easier.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
The Emergency 911 Agency, number 14, a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10-millimeter limitation for the purpose of the operation of the county Emergency 911 system pursuant to Ohio Rise Code Section 5705.19 at a rate not exceeding .35 mils for each $1 valuation, which amounts to 3.5 cents for each $100 valuation for a period of five years, to commence with a levy upon the duplica for 2003 to be collected in 2004, and which levy is a replacement, and this will be placed on the ballot on November 5, 2002 election.
Can we have John explain the difference between a replacement and a renewal? John, can you do that, please?
Good morning, John Roca C. I'm the Commissioners' Budget Director. A replacement levy really represents a tax based on updated current property values. So the assessment on that would be greater than a renewal, which is really based on the prior period values of property. So a replacement increases the amount of revenue collected versus a renewal.
Okay, thanks, John.
You're welcome.
I think there's a lot of people that don't understand the difference between a replacement and a renewal, and I think it's important that they do.
Robin, do you have a statement you want to make, or?
Yeah, I think you should let the public know why this is needed. I mean, we could go on with a renewal and--
Robin Jones, Director of 911. As everybody knows, 911, everybody knows to dial 911 if they have an emergency. But what they don't understand is underneath that 911, there's a huge network of equipment and personnel that support 36 public safety agencies in this county. So upon that, I think everybody realizes that we do need that in our county to keep that in place.
Robin, I understand. I know you're a little nervous--
That's right.
--and you don't like speaking in front of the public, but we all get there and we all get nervous.
That's right.
So just feel comfortable. But I think what needs to be explained is why do you need a replacement instead of a renewal, which will increase the revenue received from 911?
That's fine. The majority of this replacement, the renewal, was, I believe, in 1988. And I think a very small portion of it then was in 1993, and those were combined. So at this point, we haven't--we've been working with the same revenue since the majority of 1988. We do have in the future some growth needed, plus we have databases that will need to be replaced. We do have wireless issues that need to be addressed, and the costs for those addressed with this budget.
Okay, because I think that's very important. People are going to be voting on this. It's going to increase their taxes, and they need to know how important it is to 911 and why 911 needs additional money. So you're going to have to sell it to the public. We're putting it on the ballot.
Right.
But that doesn't mean that we're supporting it or not supporting it. It just means that we're putting it on the ballot. The people will decide. That is true.
I don't know. What are you--you guys, how much money are you using to market this proposal or advertise? Are you guys using any--
Commissioner, they're not allowed to use funds to market ballot issues.
So how do you get the word out?
Well, the word--the last time that this was on the ballot, we took an approach that we met with the media, and we discussed it with the media closer to election time. But we didn't have a committee put together. We allowed the voters to tell us what they wanted in 911. We did not go out and raise money and put in yard signs, and the voters overwhelmingly supported 911. People know about 911. They know the service. They're aware of the service. The only way we could get out there if we felt it was necessary to campaign would be to put a committee together, have a fundraiser, raise some money, and then spend that money on some media campaigns. Other than that, we're not allowed to use any public dollars whatsoever to pursue that issue.
So we really depend on how the media presents this to the public.
So I guess the answer to my question would be no dollars, then, correct?
Correct.
Robin, thank you, Robin.
But during the year, we do do--
That's all I asked.
But during--
That's all I asked.
Okay, that's funny.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment? The users of the system are probably your biggest advertisers, and I said this many years ago, because it was quite a while ago, but our family was a user of the system. On Christmas Eve at our house, my grandson had a seizure, and we called 911. And I learned firsthand that you don't hang up.
Because I did.
There was so much noise going on. And that year, you were also on the ballot. So my grandson became very popular through the 911 process. But he's about 10 years old now, and he only has a broken arm today. But we were very thankful for the services that 911 provided that day. So it's a very worthwhile service for our county. So I'm one of your fans, and I certainly will support this levy.
Thank you.
I'm a big fan, too, but I think we do have a decision today whether or not-- I think we do have an input on whether or not you support this or not. I think either you allow this to go on the ballot, or you do not allow it to go on the ballot.
Mr. Chairman, also move.
Well, no, I'm just saying, that's the--
Well, I made the motion.
I know. And I will second it.
Thank you, okay.
Now I'm back in discussion mode. So I think we do, as the Commissioners, I think we do have a responsibility in whether or not to allow things on the ballot or not, and how they're applied on the ballot as a renewal, okay?
I fully agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You can relax.
Can I?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Excuse me. Elizabeth Romic, are you M-I-C-S Overland? Just a question, what happens if the levy fails? If the issue fails?
The county's in trouble. That's why I think it's so important, because people today are taxed out, especially the seniors. And we have more foreclosures than we've ever seen in this county. And that's why it's so important for us to let the people know when there's a renewal or a replacement, let them know why that additional money is important and why it's needed. If not, when they know that their taxes are going to go up, they're going to vote it down unless they have a good understanding of why it's needed. And that's my opinion.
I thought I was looking at 3.5 cents. The average home is like 60,000. Using that number, you're looking at $2.10 increase. So, really, it's a matter of, for two bucks, do you want to continue? I should say, an increase. Would it be an increase of two bucks on an average of 60,000? Robbins?
Robin, you need to come to the microphone.
You thought you were done. Hal won't let us do that.
I have an average increase of a $100,000 home would be 1072. And as it stands today, it would be 578.
Okay. Thanks, Robin. Any more discussion?
I just... I'd like to go back to the point that Mr. Roca Cee made in the beginning of this discussion, that this is a replacement levy. And what that... What this does is allows this agency to collect taxes based on the current valuation as opposed to valuations that were established in the past. And this has been a longstanding issue with a lot of agencies that go forward with levies because there is a law that... Jerry, you could help out with this. But there was a... I think it was a ruling that you cannot increase the valuation unless you have a new issue. So, anyway, this is an old, old issue. And as I understand what Robin said, that this was since 1988. So, that's 12 years.
0.25, 1988, and 0.10 would have been in 1993.
So, it's been quite a while since we've asked for an increase.
The effective rate is very low at this point due to valuations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Under the Emergency Management Agency, item number 15, approve a change order number three to Ohio Diversified Services Incorporated in the Elon One Thousand, $307.66, as a credit due to the brick allowance adjustment, non-use of parking blocks, and signage allowance at the EMA Operations Center. May I authorize the President or Vice President to excuse me on behalf of the Board?
Also move.
That's a credit due to the brick company?
This is a good one. No, they pay us.
Oh, this... Okay.
After doing some changes and moving around of things out there, we ended up to the plus side on our end. So, we're getting the credit.
That's good. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Justice Center Project, number 16, authorize an additional amount not to exceed $200,000 for the proposed lobby upgrade at the Justice Center project.
I know this was discussed a few months ago, but would you bring it back to life here?
Certainly, Commissioner. Thank you. I think it was about five or six weeks ago, we saw some lobby samples of some upgrades that we could use. The Board at that time approved the architect to go forward and proceed with the necessary work to gain cost adder. They indicated to the Commission at that point that they felt it would be less than $250,000. They returned. They said that they can do those upgrades on the lobby with regard to the stair casing and the wall finish with sandstone for less than $200,000. The project is under budget. This is well within the budget, these upgrades to the lobby area. Once it became apparent that we were significantly under budget, we took a look at some of the areas that could use more durable materials for longevity, and the lobby was the one thing that came to mind immediately. And that's why we presented this upgrade to the Board. At this point, to go any further, would it require your approval to authorize a change order to proceed?
Thanks, Jim.
Also move.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Yes.
Are we authorizing to go over the original 46 million? Are we in with the 1.3 million proposed savings?
We're within the budget constraints as outlined in the project, Rachel.
Are we under the 46 million dollars with this 200,000?
I believe we operating within the budget, Commissioner.
Okay, lawyer. It seems like we're at an impasse. Are we off... Is this resolution, the way it's written, going to be taking us over the original resolution for the 46 million? Or the way it's just one written, is it taking us above and beyond? Because what I'm afraid of is if we're under 1.3 million, then I don't see the issue. But if we go over... Do you know what I'm saying, Jerry, or no?
I do, but I don't.
Are we adding $200,000 to the 46 million?
I don't know the answer to that because I'm not familiar with the issue.
I don't think so.
No, the issue was we added a... The Justice Center was approved for 46 million.
Is it 46 or is it 45?
I'll take 46, but it was 45.
I'm rounding up.
Okay, Commissioner, I give. We're within the 45 million, $300,000 budget, and it does not extend the... That dollar value any further than originally proposed.
And 45 million, 0.4. 45 million, 300,000 does not round to 46 million. If it's under 500, it goes to the lesser amount. Okay. So, 45 million.
Yeah, there's so many numbers. Anyway, are we talking at one point?
Well, the important numbers, Commissioner Moore.
So, right now, we're at 44 million, according to the last report I got, correct? I mean, with all the bids, we're 1.3 million under.
The budget for the project is 45 million, 300,000. I can't tell you where we will be at until the project's...
Okay, good. No, that's a good answer. Now, are you asking for an additional $200,000 on the 45,300?
45 million.
We're operating within the 45 million, 300,000, Rachel.
So, you're asking for an approval of $200,000 as long as it's underneath the 45,300? That's the budget established.
Exactly.
Thanks, Jerry.
Now that he's explained what's happening, it is not an increase in the overall.
Because we passed a resolution for a number. I don't want this to look like we're going above and beyond the number that originally was approved.
And we are not.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Well, I think Bob's up here.
Yes, I am.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah.
It cuts into your three minutes.
I'm surprised that this came up again. We had this meeting before, and as I recall it, that meeting was defeated. This Crystal Stairway to the Justice Center stars was rejected. I don't know where the $200,000 figure comes from. I know they talked possibly 300. However, if you take just a recent article in paper, was worried about $47,000 on a film that the public has yet to see, but some people have seen. Now, this particular film, you could have bought... How many copies?
Bob, will you please talk about this moment here?
Okay. We're talking about...
This isn't your public discussion part.
Okay. What I'm getting at is 47,000 times 10 is 470,000.
Now, Bob, talk about the 200,000.
I'm not the 47 million dollars that we went up to. I'm just wondering if there is in some way we can actually cut more of the expense of this Justice Center, thereby prepaying our debt and lowering the amount of money taken out of Lorraine County. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Mrs. Vancy?
Any more discussion, or is that sufficient? Sorry.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Item number 17, authorize the county administrator to issue a letter of intent to central business group to purchase high-density files for the prosecutor's office, clerk of courts, the juvenile office, and probate court located in the Lorraine County Justice Center in the amount not to exceed $208,844. This purchase is under state contract, and the county will experience a savings of $17,942 by committing to this purchase by the end of August 2002. By issuing this notice of intent, the county will be able to obtain a special 18-month commitment from the factory to hold today's prices and specify a ship date within six months of that timeframe, allowing two years before any product must be shipped.
Good job. Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Does Jim want to talk about this, or...
That ship date. What do you mean?
Are we going to talk or debate?
Clarify the date. I don't know if it's... Jim, if you can clarify it, or Yvonne can, but how are they going to hold this? Where are they going to hold it?
I would defer to Ms. Davis on this particular issue. We have an opportunity to save this money by locking in today's prices, and she can explain that better.
Good morning.
Good morning, Karen.
As far as the ship date, that just means it won't leave the factory until we're ready for it. We don't have to store it. We don't have to warehouse it or anything like that. It just allows us to order the equipment that we need, the high-density files that we need for the Justice Center, at the price of 2002 instead of the price at 2004. It doesn't change... We won't have any additional cost for warehousing the product or anything like that.
I understand that, but where will it be warehoused until we need it?
It will be at the factory until we order it.
It won't even be manufactured. Thank you, Commissioner.
Right.
Okay.
I think what they're saying here is that we have 18 months to purchase, then after that, six months to deliver.
Right.
Correct. Two years to... That's at least how I took it.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
I'd say, good job, too.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Under the Community Development Department, number 18, need a resolution to adopt a local implementation plan of lead-based paint for Lorraine County, Ohio pursuant to the new lead-based paint regulations implemented in the state of Ohio on June 1, 2002. Adoption of these regulations will allow the chip programs to operate using contractors who have attended the one-day lead-based paint training class for renovators and remodelers.
Also move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
How are these contractors going to know that they need the classes?
I think Ron looks out for Ron to get up there and...
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ron Twining, Community Development Director for the county, T.W.I.N.I.N.G. This is a program the federal U.S. EPA put this regulation in place in about 1984 or '86. The state of Ohio and EPA have been arguing and discussing just exactly what the administrative rules in order to administer this would be. They finally have come to resolution in June of 2002. We now know how these contractors have to be certified. There's actual... A class even before this one-day session that they have to attend. There's certain equipment, certain workplace environments that they must meet. So, this is a rather expensive situation since lead-based paint becomes airborne upon its removal. So, it's a lot more than this one-day seminar. But in order to keep current with their original certification, there is an annual one-day seminar that they must attend. What we have to do is put this in place because we are renovating older houses that may contain lead-based paint, anybody under the age of 10 that lives in that house. We are obligated to go in and test for lead-based paint and remove using the federal dollars to do that. So, we are obligated to put this in place. Another question that has come up that I'd like to address, and that is, the list of contractors we currently have are not in Lorraine County. We are actively working both with cities and contractors to get the word out that this is something that we would like, Lorraine County firms. And I'm using this opportunity to request contractors that are interested in becoming certified to do just that, to contact our office or any of the cities in order to get certified. Right now, I believe there are only three or four contractors in Lorraine County, and they are certified but do not yet have all of the equipment to operate under this program. So, the ones that you have listed in your memorandum that I sent over have the equipment and the certification. Now, I know that's a long-winded answer to that question, but we are asking that contractors contact us now that this regulation will soon be mandated throughout the state of Ohio so that we can keep Lorraine County dollars in Lorraine County.
Okay, is that equipment very expensive?
Yeah, it's the full air pack and the whole nine yards, much like you use for hazmat removal. So, that's part of the problem. It's a costly item, and some contractors are a little leery to buy those, all the equipment that's necessary if there was no mandate that in Ohio you had to have that in order to complete this work. I think now contractors within the next year or two will see the need, and that type business will be picking up. So, you will rapidly have Lorraine County companies buying the equipment and coming online.
Okay, and if they're smaller companies, we have the means to help them with the loan if they need a loan for the equipment?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
Sure.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Like to advertise for two public hearings... Excuse me. I'd advertise for two public hearings to be held at 10:30 a.m. on Thursday, September 12th, and also at 10:30 a.m. on Thursday, September 26, 2002, to consider the adoption of the Lorraine County building codes for 1, 2, and 3-family dwellings. May I publish the notice in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on August 29, September 5, September 12, and September 19, 2002?
Mr. Chairman, also move.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd just like to comment that this is a 35-year-old subject in Lorraine County, and I think it's high time we finally do something. So, attend the public hearings and hear about it.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
May I authorize the appointment of Ron Twining, Director, as member on the Workforce Development Board effective August 15, 2002?
Also move.
Second.
Discussion?
Ron, no offense, but I'm really concerned. I know that you're on so many boards, and I... I'm a little bit concerned about that because you go down to 22, and there we are again, appointing you to something else. I would have to wonder if there's someone else that can attend some of the meetings that you attend. Maybe we should check into... I would like a list of all the meetings that you have to attend, all the boards that you belong to.
Ron, you can have alternate shop, don't you? The knife.
Not on all boards, though.
Oh, really?
This... Commissioners, this particular position on the Web Board is for an economic development position.
I understand, but I mean, maybe if we saw a list of the boards that Ron's attending, maybe we can determine which ones are really important to economic development or which ones could be delegated to someone else in the department or somewhere else in the county.
I trust that Ron can handle that. If you are overburdened, will you tell us? I like that, man. You play poker.
Ron, please, just give me a list of all the boards that you're on.
I'd be happy to supply that to the Commissioners.
Thank you, Ron.
Sure.
Can we hold this until we find out?
No, I'm prepared to hold today.
God, we're just going to stretch you like a rubber band.
Well, then, maybe he'll get thinner.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Ouch.
As a fellow person who's vertically challenged, I'll have to say aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
I would like to hold it. It's not detrimental that we vote on this today, so I'm neutral. What can I say? I'm going to say no until I see the papers when I'm voting on it.
Thank you. I'm going to have to recuse myself for number 21 due to a possible conflict, so I'll be[1641.52] so I'll be stepping out for that. If you could have Paula come get me, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Number 21, to authorize the Board of Commissioners on behalf of the Economic Development Department to enter into engagement letter with Cohen &amp; Company of Cleveland, Ohio, to provide the necessary accounting and economic forecasts, et cetera, and services related to the Wolf Envelope litigation in the amount of $2,000.
Madam Vice Chair, also move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
She thought you were gonna have coffee.
I was on my way.
Number 22, to nominate Ron LeFtwine for appointment to the District 9 Natural Resource Assistance Council to represent the national resource and economic development interest of Lorain County for a three-year term.
I would just like to say this is a reappointment. This National Resource Assistance Council is the council that is responsible for recommending the distribution of the Clean Ohio green monies on the one side with the issue one that was passed a couple years ago. It is a three-county area, and Ron has served for one year, and his term is up in September, and so that's why it's on the agenda, and I will also move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
County Engineers, number 23, need to award the following engineering contracts which have been programmed through ODOT and NOACA. The county engineer went through the consultant selection process as adopted by Commissioners' Resolution Number 96-850. They'll be to award to Finkbiner, Petterson Stroud Incorporated from Akron, Ohio, for the Oberlin-Lirri Road project, for the Lirri Corporation Limit to the Burnet Ridge Road, in the amount of $106,782. To Adashay Q&amp;E Land Associates of Cleveland, Ohio, for East River Chestnut Ridge Road project, that would be for Chestnut Ridge Road to the Lirri Corporation Limit, in the amount of $114,000. For the RE Warner Associates of Westlake, Ohio, for the North Ridge Road Cooper Foster Park Road project, that's from State Route 57 to Broadway Avenue, in the amount of $60,894. To KS Associates of Alirri, Ohio, for Lake and Lirri Avenue projects, that would be for Alirri to North Ridge Road, and Lake Avenue to Clifton Avenue, in the amount of $113,200. And for K.E. McCartney Associates of Mansfield, Ohio, for Colorado Avenue project, for Sheffield Village West Corporation Limit to the Abbey Road, and that's for $92,525.
So move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Mr. Cranny, would you like to make a statement? Good morning.
Yes, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice talking to you. I'll set the rush one ball joke and you show it.
I know, I know, sorry.
Collection's getting smaller. Just short and sweet. We spent a lot of time on getting these projects out. This is engineering contract only. There are five projects we're going to start. We plan to complete this engineering and start construction within a two-to-three-year period. We also plan to totally inspect these all projects ourselves. I feel very strongly we should have more local interest in the inspections, more responses to the individual complaints, and we will do that from now on. Total projects of all these projects combined, total cost is $6 million. 80/20, 80 fed, 20 Ohio Public Works. It's 100% funded, and I'm gonna get my engineering paid back at the same time because I'm gonna apply for 29%. So, this is based on that bond that we approved for our office. Thank you again for that. And this rolls through and rolls through and rolls through. And I think when this is done over maybe a five- or six-year period, you're gonna see Lorain County getting more than their fair share of federal funds from NOACA. I mean, Lorain County. Cities are on their own.
Good job. You and your staff.
Staff's great. Thank you.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Also, the county engineers report number 24, board contractor for Febreze Trucking and Hailing of Valley City, Ohio, in the amount of $935,033.39 for the Colorado Avenue Reconstruction Project. The estimated cost was $4,080,622.30. Febreze proposes to begin work within 15 days after the receipt of a notice to proceed, and will complete all work on or before October 15, 2003. This was the lowest and most bid responsive complying with specifications. Funding for this project is 80% federal and 20% Ohio Public Works Commission. County Engineer has reviewed and recommends approval.
Also move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Okay, under the Job and Family Services, number 25, to authorize the Department of Job and Family Services to enter into agreement with Discount Drug Mart Incorporated of Medina, Ohio, for the purchase of school supplies for the Ohio Works First children using TANF funds in the amount now to exceed $105,355. This should read, "This was the most responsive bid received complying with specifications. May to authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board, and authorize Mary Legolsky, Director, to execute the contracts on behalf of the Commissioners as needed."
Mr. Chairman, I see a young lady moving forward, and maybe she'd like to comment on this.
I'm Sue Boines with the Department of Job and Family Services. With your approval today, the Department of Job and Family Services would like to offer every OWF child in Lorain County, that's a child who receives cash assistance, two certificates, one for a $50 school supply certificate, and one for a $100 school shoe certificate. After going through the bid process, we found the most responsive bids to be Discount Drug Mart for the school supplies and Payless for the school shoes.
Okay, a question, Sue. You have Drug Mart here in Medina. Medina must be the headquarters?
That's correct. Actually, they have eight locations in Lorain County.
Okay.
So move.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye. Thank you.
Number 26, to authorize the Job and Family Services to enter into agreement with Payless Shoe Stores Incorporated of Topeka, Kansas, for the purchase of school dress athletic shoes for their Ohio Works First children using TANF funds in the amount not to exceed $210,800. This was the lowest and most responsive bid received complying with specifications. May to authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board, and authorize Mary Legolsky, Director, to execute the contracts on behalf of the Commissioners as needed with county prosecutor's approval as before.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. So how do these people, oh, there you are. How do these people receive the voucher or whatever it is they need? I mean, are you going to be flooded over there with people coming to the agency?
Actually, they don't have to do anything at all. We're using our June payroll to identify the families with OWF school-aged children, so they'll be receiving in the mail a cover letter listing the locations where they can redeem the certificates, how to do that, and the certificates will actually be enclosed with that.
Okay, OWF, Ohio Works First?
Ohio Works First, only if they're receiving cash assistance. However, that will include, we have many relative caregivers, grandparents raising grandchildren, so if they're also receiving OWF cash for their grandchildren, they'll receive certificates as well.
Okay, can anyone else receive a certificate that may not be receiving cash?
No. I wish they could, but there was only a finite amount of money, and that will cover approximately 2,100 schoolchildren on OWF.
Okay. Thanks, Sue.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to advertise for bids for a computer program and training project for the provision of access data programming services. This bid's to be received until 2:00 p.m. on Tuesday, September 3, 2002, in the public hearing room. May to publish the notice in the Chronicle-Telegram and Morning Journal on August 19 and 26, 2002.
So move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, what is the program? Who can explain what the program is?
Do you have any information on the Ohio project?
Excuse me, could I ask what is that?
Not you.
Ron, number 27. 27.
Good morning, Marita.
Provision of access data programming service.
I think Sue knows now. She found the paperwork.
I might be able to wing it. I believe previously we had a contract very much like this, and it was awarded to a computer programmer who came in and cleaned up a number of our programs, tweaked a number of our programs, built a few new programs for us. In the process of having her come in, it only made us realize that there were a number of other things that needed to be done, and the programmer was able to point out additional things that were needed. I know that one of the things that I included in the bid in my division for social services was a listing of health check clients who were in a computer system that, for whatever reason, the way it had been built a few years back, it was no longer able to compile the information we needed. So, the programmer said that could be rebuilt, but it was not included in the first bidding project. So this is kind of an additional project that includes a whole hodgepodge of computer programming updates, things like that.
But we don't have an estimate of what the cost would be?
Nope. Nope.
Okay, can we hold this until we get some further information?
Aren't they just asking for bids?
Yeah, but we don't even have an estimate of what it...
But they have a description of what they need, don't they?
They'll probably find out.
Probably find out.
The bids, what the cost is, and then you can determine if it's...
All we're doing is getting bids right now. We can determine later whether or not we're gonna pay for it. Right?
This is for programming and services. What programming and what services?
This will have to come back to you for review upon receiving the information. I think it's a chicken-and-egg thing. They don't have an anticipated cost until they get the bids, which will tell them what the cost would be.
Or do they know what they want? How can you bid if you don't know what you want?
They'll have an RFP, and it'll spell out...
The RFP will spell it out?
Right.
What spells it out, Jim?
Their RFP will spell out the services they're requesting. They'll get the cost out, and then at that time, they'll re-approach the Board with the cost out and ask you to approve, or if you're inclined, you can disapprove their request. But they need to go out to the marketplace to get that cost out for you, Commissioner.
So let's just get something, get an RFP.
Right, there'll be no execution, no expenditures in dollars. It'll come back to this Board. Is that correct, Sue?
Correct.
That's the way to do things, get the best price.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
May to authorize the County Administrator the authority to approve the payments for Lorain County Job and Family Services Charitable Care vouchers, which will assist to expedite the charitable vendor's monthly payments.
Also move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
This is just so that, because we're not having a meeting next week, correct?
It's the premiere thing, not just next week.
I thought it was just for next week. I think Jerry's grinning. He never grinned, Jerry, that's why. He never laughed at my jokes.
He's being a babble on today.
Any more discussion?
I asked a question. I didn't know if that's what this means or no. This just means that he can authorize a sign-up, that's all correct.
This was precipitated by needing to sign them for next week, but the resolution is not restrictive to haul in next week, to answer your question.
So basically, in case it needs to be done, you're gonna make sure it gets done?
Exactly, Commissioners.
And in the past, we've had a special meeting once a month in order to do this, so I think this will facilitate getting this business attended to in an orderly fashion.
Correct. It'll just leave you some of that burden from the Board.
Okay. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Number 29, under the Board of Mental Health, a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation for the purpose of providing a network of essential mental health services and facilities for children, adults, and senior adults pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section 5705.221, at a rate now exceeding .6 mils for each $1 evaluation, which amounts to $0.06 for each $100 evaluation for a period of five years, which levy is a replacement of an existing levy in the same amount. This will be placed on the ballot at the November 5, 2002 election.
Somebody here to speak on behalf of this levy?
I'm Amy Levin. I'm Director of the Board of Mental Health. Thank you for hearing from us this morning. This .6 mil levy has been supported by Lorain County voters since 1973. The last time we came before you, we asked to renew this levy. This time, we're asking to replace it. A replacement will cost the average homeowner an increase of a little bit less than $0.50 a month. This money is needed for several purposes. One is to sustain the current level of services and the safety net that's in place. Secondly, to meet the increased demand that we're finding over the last year or so. And third, to continue the network's effort to get services to children before their problems are severe. In the last year, there has been an increase in demand for services. There has been an 11% increase in the number of children seen, and an 8% increase in the number of adults seen. We've added programs to support workers who are experiencing the stress of job loss here in the county, and have also done increased work with children in schools. Last year, approximately 15,000 people received the services of the Mental Health Network. In those services were 1,800 adults and youth who were seen by the 24-Hour Crisis Service at a time when their needs were very severe. There were approximately 6,600 calls to the Rape Crisis Service during the year, and in addition to several thousand people whose problems were less severe, approximately 1,000 children with very severe problems, and 1,500 adults with serious mental illness were served. Another, well, and also in addition to, we had approximately 150 women receive a safe harbor when they were experiencing domestic violence, and over 400 families a month served with legal advocacy and support because of those issues. I can go on for another 10 minutes or so about various kinds of service that this levy provides, but that is a snapshot.
What's the current levy right now per 100? You're asking for $0.06?
Yes.
Okay, what's it right now? $0.06, but you're asking for a...
We're asking, this .6 mil levy has, is, we're asking for replacement.
But it's the same amount as the renewal.
It's the same amount.
What's confusing, it's the same amount as the renewal, but it will generate more because it's the replacement.
I'm trying to compare it to 911, where they had $0.35 for 100. Okay, I can see now, I understand. I was looking at the different, I'm sorry. I was comparing apples to oranges. Sorry.
Yes.
Amy, I think it would be helpful if you can explain, there's a reserve amount that Mental Health has. Explain that because it could be confusing to the public.
Sure. Our system is approximately a $20 million mental health system. We must hold some portion of the Board's money to handle cash flow. For example, we must pay because of state regulation when services are provided and wait for the federal portion to come in when it's a Medicaid payment. So, we often wait weeks for our federal Medicaid to come and pay ahead to the agencies. We also manage a lot of risk. While we can plan and manage our system, we cannot cap our costs. If children need placement or adults need hospitalization, that gets paid. And in that way, we function much like an insurance company. So, we cannot allocate out all of our money every year, so some of it is held for that kind of risk. Secondly, we know that the funding will be flat into '04, and so we have planned ahead very carefully to ensure that we maintain stability in our system so that we're not in a position where we're having to ask you to float us a loan or something, and then having to cut services to pay back because of the risk that we carry. And thirdly, we have, in the last couple of years, been very, very aggressive in getting grant monies for services to children, and those monies have made it possible for us to cover startup costs. What we have done, then, is plan ahead so that when those monies go away, we have the ability to continue those very vital programs. So, if you have, you know, any, another question about the reserve, I hope we'll answer it.
I think if people have questions, maybe you would welcome their calls, too.
Sure, I would. Definitely be willing to discuss it.
The Board member I spoke to said you guys are very frugal and very efficient with your finances, so I appreciate that.
We have been cutting our administrative costs over the last couple of years. We feel good about that.
Okay. Have you already read the resolution yet, or have you? Okay, so move.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Thank you for coming in today.
Under the Sheriff's Department, item number 30, to approve and enter into agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Biomedical Waste Services Incorporated from Williamstown, West Virginia, for disposal of medical waste. The agreement is in the amount of $3,000 per year for a three-year period. May to authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Also, under the Sheriff's Department, number 31, to accept the Bureau of Justice Administration funds for a local law enforcement block grant in the amount of $18,611. Also under the Sheriff's Department, number 31, to accept the Bureau of Justice Administration funds for a local law enforcement block grant in the amount of $18,611. The county's local match is $2,068, which monies have been budgeted in the general fund. The purpose of this grant is to reduce crime and improve public safety, and various equipment will also be purchased. Any cost over the allotted grant funds will be handled by the Sheriff's Office, and these funds must be accepted through the Internet on or before August 30, 2002.
I'll sort them out.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
We have to approve change order number two to TH Martin Duck Systems Incorporated in the amount of $4,125 for fan coil enclosures, removal, and reinstallation, and to add duct insulation to extension of outside air intake modified for clearance to fire alarm equipment at the Lorraine County Correctional Facility. Lorraine County Sheriff and Construction Manager has reviewed and recommends approval. We have to authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the board.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Under the Solid Waste Management District, number 33, a resolution to amend Resolution Number 02-519 that was adopted July 11, 2002, which approved the Memorandum of Understanding for Computers for Education Program of Ohio, the Contract for the Computer Recycling Day. This amendment is to reflect a change in the contract for this project from Computers for Education Program of Ohio to the Ohio Penal Industries, a division of the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction. The Computers for Education Program has ceased operations. All other terms of the MOU will remain the same. Dan Bilman, the Solid Waste Coordinator, and the County Prosecutor's Office have reviewed and recommends approval. We have to authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the board.
I'll sort them out. Second.
Discussion?
Dan, can you explain the program again, please?
Morning, Commissioners. Dan Bilman. I'm the Commissioner's Solid Waste Director. The program will be on September 14. No change in the date. We had a problem with the company going out of business because of internal problems, and they were actually in between us and OPI. So at this point in time, we are accepting more responsibility for what we're doing, which is not a problem, and we will be dealing with OPI directly.
I think what I mean by explaining, Dan, how are you getting the computers and how are you going to distribute them?
Okay. Everything's the same as before as far as distribution. We're going to have the collection at Liria Telephone Company Lot on Turnus Boulevard in Liria, out by Ron Miller, or the Chevrolet dealer and Abraham Buick. And we will have...we'll be utilizing OPI inmates to help us with pulling the...putting the computers into the boxes and loading them to the trailers to be transported to OPI. When they get to OPI, they are...the good ones are sorted out and rebuilt, and those rebuilt ones are going to be available for the schools in Lorraine County to utilize in their programs. The cost factor for these computers is going to be around $55.00. They will be upgraded computers, and they will be probably state-of-the-art compared to some of them I've seen in some of the Liria schools. It is an excellent program that we've initiated here. Also, within the program, we're going to be collecting cell phones, and we've got a couple proposals that will involve the seniors. We will be probably putting these phones out to the seniors through RSVP.
And I think you mentioned that those cell phones don't have to be activated for them to use it for 911?
That is correct, Commissioner. When the cell phones are turned off by the provider, they automatically will still dial, be able to dial 911.
So even if a senior gets this phone and they can't afford to keep it on, they can use it for a safety measure, a precaution, just to dial 911?
That is correct. We also have identified a local nonprofit group just recently that will take these cell phones and look at them and make sure that the batteries are good, make sure they have the instructions with them, make sure that they have the charging system and everything's operational before they are given out.
Dan, I'm going to jump the gun here, but we go down to old business and all this money, this $198,000, and I've noticed that most of that is advertising, and I have a little bit of concern. I would like for some of this advertising to...for you to use it to advertise, like the computer programs, when people...when and where they can drop their computers off, and then maybe at another time, an advertisement for the telephones and one for the seniors where they can pick up those phones, because not everybody reads the paper, or they may miss the ad, or they may not hear it on radio, however you're going to advertise in that way. But I'm thinking billboards?
Well, we are going to be doing some flyers at the fair. That's going to be one of our speaking points at the fair, to get people to understand that where the pickup point or where the distribution point to bring them is going to be on Turnus Boulevard.
Okay, because my thoughts on the billboards, I think they're up there for a month. You pay for one month for the billboard, so that, you know, it's going to be there for a month, where if you do something with the media, it's like a one-time shot, and if you miss it, that's it. The senior doesn't know it. But even in the senior papers for the telephones?
Yes, we can do the billboards within a structure. We have an advertising plan that we'll be bringing before you very shortly.
I mean, too often...
We have to get this...we're trying to get this done first as a housekeeping item, then the advertising will be coming up next.
Yeah, because I see a lot of billboards. It just repeats, like, you know, recycle, recycle. Well, right now, after 10 years of hearing recycle, people know about recycling, but they don't know how to recycle or where to bring this thing or what times you're going to have this if they miss it in the ads. And to me, $198,000 is an awfully lot of money for advertising, and I just want to see issues of the right way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Administrator's report?
We've got two brief issues this morning. The first is a request that arrived late. We weren't able to get on the agenda from the Sheriff's Department for replacement of their dishwasher out at the jail. Initial price looks were in the neighborhood of $20,000, $35,000. The jail folks were able to get a lease agreement for $100 a month for three years to lease one, thereby saving the county a substantial amount of money. Since we're not meeting next week and they want to move forward with that, I'm asking the board to approve them to enter into that lease agreement and to attach to their...to the letter there.
This is for what again?
It's for a dishwasher.
Dishwasher.
Okay, what about the maintenance on that dishwasher, Jim?
It will be included in the lease agreement.
What are you talking about? $100 bucks a month? Are you talking about $20,000 and $100 bucks a month?
No, I'm talking about $100 a month, period.
For what?
For the lease agreement for the dishwasher.
To replace it would be $20,000?
Correct.
Okay.
$20,000 to $35,000.
They're suggesting instead of...this is the same concept as the biomedical waste issue that we...number 30 that we've already approved?
Yes, Commissioner. Yes.
Okay.
The lease agreement's been through the prosecutor's office.
This looks like we're just paying $99.95 for a service period, just for a service. Is that about right? Is that about right?
Please.
And then you're...and you don't have to agree to buy any other cell, though, it looks like, so...
No, actually, what it is, is they bring it in, they install everything. It's a three-year period. We'll probably pay it yearly to cut down on other work. They take care of service and parts. Like you said, $15,000 to $20,000 just to start to buy one.
Right, right.
The one we have is only seven years old, and it's already gone. We had someone come out. It would cost $6,500 just to repair the one we have, and they're suggesting we don't do it because it won't last. So that is the machine, that is the service, and parts for the life of the contractor, which would be less than $3,600.
Right.
And we've put that much in the machine in the last 18 months that we have.
I'll sort them out for approval.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
It's signed and ready to go.
Thank you, Commissioners. The second issue that I just received is going to be a change order request for the Justice Center. We ran into a bit of a problem trying to run the stormwater drains from the site, Overton Storm Sewer on the south side of Second Street. The original drawings for the city indicated the depth of their storm sewer that was incorrect, and we need to take all our drainage to the north side of the street to a lower storm sewer. This was discovered when they started excavating, and they actually got down and took a look at the actual depth of the storm sewer vice the depth listed on the drawings for the street. It's going to cost an additional...up to $19,000 to move that storm sewer from the south side of Second Street across to the north side of Second Street. There also may be an interference with a water line that runs down the center of Second Street, but the city has agreed to remove that interference should the water line present a problem getting to that storm sewer on the north side of the street. This could not have been anticipated. Once again, the depth of the storm sewer is listed on the city blueprints indicates it to be deeper than it actually is. We cannot tie into it because it's not deep enough for the proper slope for our drainage needs, and that's why we need to go to the north side of the street. So it's all spelled out there. We need this change order to proceed, keep the job on track. It's one of those things.
What's it going to be, Jim? $4,000?
Not to exceed $19,000. It's $15,000, and then there's $4,000 and possible additional cost. So there was two figures there, $15,000 and $4,000. So I'm asking for a resolution not to exceed $19,000. Once again, this is within our contingency. It does not raise the budget past $45,300,000. We do have contingency money to deal with...like, Commissioner, we do have contingency money to deal with these issues.
What's the difference if you go north or south? They still have to do the job.
Well, the south side of Second Street has a storm sewer, and so does the north side. The north side of Second Street, the storm sewer is at a lower elevation, lower depth, excuse me, than on the south side.
So they want...
We need to go to the deeper one so we have the proper slope on our pipes, on tile, so that we have adequate flow.
So we're talking $19,000 just to go a little deeper?
Well, it's not just that. We have to go across the road, and we have to tie in and...
Is it a bigger sewer across the road?
Well, that's what I said, across the road. It's not a chicken.
And you don't if you're on the other side. If the sewer were to be tied in on the other side?
South side, we wouldn't have to go on the road or across it.
So that's where the cost is, is to tear that road up, go to the other side.
Can't they bore under?
I don't believe they're going...boring, actually, believe it or not, is more expensive than trenching. Plus, for the ties they have to do, they would...they're going to need to cut through the road to do this.
Is this a bigger sewer on the north side?
I'm not sure if it's a bigger sewer, but it's at a depth that is necessary for the proper slope of our drainage con...
I thought we would get a fringe benefit. There was a new sewer that was supposed to be put in to facilitate this Justice Center. Did that in fact occur?
My understanding is that the sewer on the south side was the one that we were supposed to tie into, but because of certain interferences, when the sewer was put in by the city, they were not able to lower it to the desired depth, and therefore, it had to be at a higher elevation than originally designed. So we're not able to use that sewer. We need to use the one on the north side.
Okay, and I appreciate that, but that didn't answer my question. And maybe my question is not pertinent, but it's the piece of information that I have. We have experienced some problems in this administration building with the drainage of water at peak times.
Well, we have...the hydraulic pressure is pushing water up to the foundation. Yes.
Okay, so anyway, and I thought in the process, when we talked about this Justice Center, that there was to be a new drainage line that was going to be put in to facilitate this.
And I understand that there...I don't know whether the one on the north side or the south side of Second Street was that new line. I guess that's a better answer.
Okay.
Chris Eichenlopp is here or was here.
He's still here.
Chris, do you know? Okay. I do know there's adequate drainage available on Second Street for the Justice Center.
Oh, wait a minute, Jim, because there wasn't one we had the other buildings of, because there was a lot of flooding in there before.
Correct.
I think it's really important that we know what the city's doing, because they were supposed to repair the sewers or something there for the Justice Center.
The sewers on both sides, the storm sewers on both sides of Second Street, and either one of them, according to our engineers, is adequate to take the anticipated storm runoff from our property without causing us any problems. It's kind of unusual to have storm sewers on both sides of that street to start with. I mean, that's quite a bit of water evacuation coming off of Second Street, recognizing that they upgraded those storm sewers on Second Street with the anticipated city hall going in and the Justice Center. And I don't believe we're going to have any problem. I've been assured that there's adequate drainage there in those two storm sewers. Anything further than that is beyond my technical understanding. I can only listen to what I've been told by the engineers and the architects.
Well, look into it, will you?
Oh, yeah, I'll ask them again, but right now, our issue is not so much whether it's adequate to receive the flow, it's that we have to get to the north side of Second Street.
And it's a timely issue?
Yes, it is.
You need approval now so that they can...
We already dug the parking lot up across the forensic lab once in anticipation of completing this job, and when we discovered that there was a problem with the depth of the sewer, we had to come back and fill the hole, and so we could continue to use the parking lot.
But I think we have to know if it can receive the flow, because if it can't, then they come in and dig up the south side and say, okay, now we're going to replace the south side. You have to go back and tie in on the south side. I think we should know...
Well, the city engineers are the ones that are...
Before we go through all that.
The city's been involved in this, and that's why they agreed to remove any interferences with the water line so we can get to the north side. They're agreeing that we need to go to the north side.
Well, okay, can you guarantee us that we won't have any backup, that that sewer's going to accept the flow?
I can't speak to the city engineer. I think that...
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Chris Eichenlopp, Assistant Safety Service Director. As Mr. Cordez has said, that the city engineer is working with the engineers of the county, and if they are comfortable, I can't say and guarantee anything for our council. I have to...would rely on our engineer and the communications that have happened between the counties and city engineers.
Do you have any information on it, Karen?
My only concern is the parking lot that we would be working through.
Up there?
Sorry about that. The parking lot that we would need to work through is on the west side of the church, and they have a preschool that starts up the first week of September, and if we don't proceed with this work, we're going to affect the ability of the parents to drop off the kids at the church for the preschool. If we proceed, we can get the work done prior to the first...I think it's the second week of September when the preschool starts. It's my understanding that the city did increase the sanitary sewer on the north side of Second Street. In fact, there's still a patch in the street from where they had done that work.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Chairman, also move that the...was this a...
Change order.
Change order?
Yes.
I'll move the change order be approved not to exceed $19,000.
I'll second that, but I want some assurance that the city has taken care of the problem, because I know that we had flooding in the homes there when they...when we had the other departments over there before we tore them down. So I want to hear something from the city to be sure that we're not going to have it in a new building.
We'll personally discuss it with Mr. Hawke, I believe is...okay?
Thanks.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
No.
That concludes any issues.
County Prosecutor's report, Mr. Ennis?
I need a resolution from the Commissioners with respect to the proposed joint economic development district between Liria Township... development district between Alaria Township and the city of Alaria. The proposed contract has been filed with the Commissioners, and what is required from the Commissioners is a vote to place this matter on the ballot before the electors of Alaria Township and members. So, in other words, what has happened is Alaria and Alaria Township have entered a contract. That contract is subject to approval by the voters of Alaria Township, but the Board of Commissioners is an entity that has to direct this to be sent over to the Board of Elections.
So, move.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I want to, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to again publicly thank Mr. Ennis and the city of Alaria and Alaria Township for working through many meetings to give the residents of Alaria Township the opportunity to vote on this, which I think is, while it might not be everything they wanted, it certainly is a plus, and I think all those entities are to be commended, and I appreciate the effort that was put into this.
Derek's at all? Is that all you have? Okay. Commissioners' report?
Mr. Vassie?
I have nothing today.
Mr. Blair?
Yesterday, Lakeview Park, it was wonderful. Commissioner Vassie and I had the opportunity to be there for the dedication of their, they call it the annex to Lakeview Park. It was just wonderful, and I'm so excited about it, so I just wanted to tell you.
Okay.
Raw piece of the ribbon back. It's not the rock, but it's the ribbon, see? It's a wonderful facility, and those were solid waste dollars that the county agreed to purchase the recycled materials and stuff, yes, all of that, and it was just, it was a great day. So, that's my report.
Thank you. I have none.
Under old business, we have a couple items for the solid waste management district. The first one would be to, excuse me, authorize the solid waste management district to file the 2003 Recycle Ohio Grant application, excuse me, in the amount of $198,100 to the Department of Natural Resources. The district will again partner with the cities of Alaria and Lorraine with the breakdowns follows. City of Alaria, $56,600. Lorraine, $56,600. The district, $84,900, for a total of $198,100. The required match amount to be paid by the district will be $41,625 for a total grant of $239,725. I'd authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the board.
So, move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes. Dan.
How do we control the, do we control where these advertising dollars are spent, or does it, once we hand them over to the cities, they can spend them as they see fit?
No, we monitor that throughout the year in our department.
I know you monitor, but I'm asking you, do we control how those dollars are spent, or once you hand them over to the cities, do they pretty much can say, "We're going to use billboards, we're going to use radio"?
No, Commissioner. What's on the sheet is what they're going to spend it for, and we make sure that that's what they do.
What sheet is on, right here? Okay. And how do we know what's going to be on the ads? We don't really, do they, do we produce the ads, or do they produce the ads?
No, we initiate the process and help them do the ads, but they basically, if they want to talk about recycling in the ads, that's fine. If they want to talk about litter, that's also fine. It's completely, this process is, is an approval process through ODNR. ODNR has the last word on how these funds are appropriated to the cities and which direction they want to go. So, it's a partnership between the department, Solid Waste Department, and cities and ODNR.
Yeah, I wondered if ODNR would let them use some of that money in different ways, too, because it, like I said, it's almost $200,000, all going to advertisement.
We had, does it look like there's some equity sharing, or no? We've had this discussion in the past regarding the prop...
What do you mean by equity sharing, Commissioner?
Equity in the different markets, to make sure that we're effectively communicating with the whole community.
Yeah, we, well, if you're asking me whether we are giving out dollars for usage within the county with county businesses, yes, we look at that very seriously. We try to keep all those dollars in the county with existing businesses in the county. We're very, very, that's an important thing of our project, really. And ODNR does not have any problems with that, but there are some things that we cannot, some of the services cannot be provided for through Lorraine County businesses, so we do go outside the county.
But, Dan, ODNR allows us to buy recycled material with ODNR money. Can we do that with some of this $198,000? I mean, it was a good thing, like Commissioner Blair said yesterday, seeing the gazebo, seeing the cement purchase with solid waste money. Those are things that people benefit from. When you do the advertisement, like I said a little bit ago, you know, most people know it's time to recycle, and how to do this and that. But give back it to the community, and these are things, like we saw yesterday, that people can use playgrounds. This is really an incentive for people to recycle. They see their things being recycled, like cardboard or whatever it is, and that's an incentive, more than a billboard or some radio ads or newspaper ads that we're going to pitch or forget about. Can we write to ODNR? If they won't allow us to do it with this money, let's write to them and coax them into letting us use the money in different ways.
If you approve this today, we can go back to ODNR and change some of the specs. They will allow us to do that to some degree, but it's got to be within their windows, okay, of usage.
Maybe we can open their windows up a little bit more, but we'd also have to talk to the communities, too, because they would have to be willing to go on with it.
Right, and basically, the communities do use our recommendations in a lot of the, a lot of the advertising and usage of the funding. It's actually, it's a good partnership between Lorraine County and the cities and ODNR.
I'm sure the cities would like to see more playgrounds and more, more things that are visible.
I don't think you're going to find that that's a correct usage of the funds.
See, but it's recycled material.
It's actually, we're actually putting out $41,000 and getting $198,000 back from the state, so it, you know, it's a good partnership. We're getting more than we're putting out.
Yeah, that's good, but we want to use it the right way.
That is correct, and I fully agree with you.
Let me ask my question differently. Maybe you can answer it again, since I didn't get the answer I was looking for. Who decided which where this market was going to be targeted? Did we, or did you guys do RFPs to say, "We are going to be spending $126,000"? Did you advertise this, or who picked out where all the money was going to go on for Alaria, for Lorraine, and for the district?
It was an effort between ODNR, our department, and the cities.
Okay, and did you guys advertise for this, or did you guys decide who you were going to target? Did you advertise this, or did the three agencies pick this?
No, there hasn't been any advertisements as yet.
Okay, so the three, the three groups decided to pick these local means to market, correct?
Everything is marked down, has been identified, but there has, there is some that aren't identified as of yet. Okay, there is some vendors that haven't been identified.
Now, do you understand where I was going with my question from a year ago?
You expect us to remember a whole year ago?
I expect Dan to remember. You know, Dan was talking about local preference issue. I was talking about more of making sure the whole community participated, and such as maybe some of the African-American radio stations, Hispanic stations, other smaller stations that are in this community that are not getting, you know, that seem to be ignored here. All I'm saying is, when I said equity sharing, I meant to make sure that the whole community participates in the marketing of solid waste dollars. That's all I was looking for, and I just wondered who made the decision. I mean, if you do an RFP, or you advertise it, and they don't participate, that's fine, but it sounds like three groups made the decision. That's what you just said.
We did ask a couple of the radio stations to participate. I don't believe one of them actually got his paperwork in to do this.
No, you answered the question. I appreciate that.
How do you feel about, between advertising and spending the money in something that will last for years?
No, this is an ODNR, this is an ODNR program, correct? If we don't apply by August 30th, we get $0.
That's correct.
So, this is, all this is, is this is grant money available to promote recycling, to increase the effort to recycle.
But you can promote recycling by people viewing the thing like the gazebo.
Oh, that's fine, but this...
And put a sign there, "This is recycled material, you're recycled..."
And we have that ability. All we see is, either, we can either do marketing to really promote recycling, or we can just say, "You know what? We don't agree with this. We don't want the $196,000."
But on the other hand, we can write ODNR and let them know that this is what we want to do with the money. Give us some leadway with it.
We don't have to write them. You can give me the recommendations that you'd like to see, and I can just pick up the phone and see if it's acceptable or not, and then we will rewrite what is here, okay? We will still get the same amount of dollars, we're just going to move them around a little bit.
Okay.
What you're saying, we need to hurry up and apply for this grant, but you can actually tweak this a little bit and make sure the dollars are spread out or used for other avenues, correct?
That's correct. I mean, it's what our preferences are, what the window is with ODNR is what we can use the dollars for. If that's what your pleasure is, to do some other things with it, that's fine if that's, they've got the ceremony.
Yeah, but can we ask them to open that window up a little more?
Yes, we can.
Kind of encourage them somehow? I don't know how, but...
Usually, it goes through a very long process, though.
I know. I mean, let's apply for this money. Now, I'm not saying not to apply for it, but let's try and encourage them to allow us to use that money in different ways that are visible and lasting, like the gazebos and park equipment and whatever else we can.
Ma'am, Commissioner, I believe that there's a section here that Dan needs to brief us more on in the future, but in order to buy recycled or materials, there's a 50% match. So, I think that there's different matches that are required.
That's correct, yes. Thanks, Commissioner.
I think this is probably a good start, but I think he needs to work on the balance of what he might be able to do.
Yes.
And encourage them to give us more than 50%.
Excuse me?
I said, encourage them to give us more than 50%. Let us know how we can help to...
Yeah, this is, these are guidelines set up throughout for the whole state, so it's just not us. We get the, the amount of dollars we're getting based on population of the county, and the reason that Lorraine and Alaria are the only communities that are involved is because of the population base that they have, though, you know, North Ridgeville does not qualify, or Vermillion doesn't qualify, just...
But if we can use our associations, the state associations, and get some other support from other directors to just change the use of that money and to increase the percentage, and so that we wouldn't have to have such a large match money, because I know a lot of counties don't have the money that we do when they're solid waste departments, so they may not promote the idea.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Also, the second item under old business for solid waste, to approve the filing and award of the Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District, 2002, 2003 Take Pride Ohio Grant Application, an agreement in the amount of $20,000. The district has applied for and received a litter prevention grant from ODNR, which is a follow-up to the litter summit meetings that was held in late 2001 and early 2002. The grant budget breakdown is as follows: For advertising, $600. Signs, $7,434. Containers, $9,600. Registration, $366. Litter officer, $2,000, for a total of $20,000. The solid waste district is also requesting in advance of $12,000 from the general fund to the Take Pride Ohio Grant account. These monies will be repaid to the general fund as advancement checks from ODNR are received. We had a motion, we had tabled this last week for discussions, if you want to untable it and then vote.
Motion to untable.
Okay. Is that what you did?
Yeah.
Second. All right. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Now, we can talk about it.
Now, we can talk.
See, here's ODNR money, and they're allowing us other uses for it. This is ODNR money, they're allowing us to use it in other ways. Let's force them to allow us to use that 190-some-thousand, almost $200,000, in other ways, somehow.
Within its structure, it's strictly for litter, okay? And it's a different department.
I know. I mean, I don't mean to belabor the issue, it's just that there's $200,000 there, and in my opinion, it's just going to waste. People are going to forget what you did with that money. You get the message? Just give us something we could see for a long time to come, instead of throwing the money away like that.
And also have the ability, through our grant structure, from the solid waste district to the communities, to put those playgrounds out there, running tracks, so on and so forth. So, this is not the only money we have to do that type of...
I know, but it's more money that we can use to benefit the community for long-term use.
Right. I appreciate your thoughts, Commissioner.
My issue is, we're using $2,000 for a Vermillion police officer. How do we know that's, they're just not using this to offset their expenses, because they're half in Erie and half in Lorraine, you know?
Well, and you're correct in one sentence that the Vermillion is, is half in Erie County, half in Lorraine County, except for the solid waste district, and we are mandated to serve the whole community in Vermillion.
So, we couldn't, we couldn't have used the $2,000 for the Sheriff's Department to help out with the litter control? Which is more, which helps more than one community?
We have, we have split this up by participation. These are the communities that did participate in the litter summit. The communities that didn't participate are not getting any funding. It was a voluntary thing on their part.
We're talking about the litter control officer, not talking about anything else.
Okay.
So, you're telling me that they're the, Vermillion's the only one that participated in this?
Let me answer your question. Hopefully, I'll answer it in a different manner.
You've been doing that all day.
The city of Vermillion was, and all these other entities, were giving a choice on what they could use the dollars for. Within the structure of ODNR, we tried to elicit out of these communities some enforcement, some advertising in different, in different venues, some trash containers. It just happens that Vermillion wanted to use those dollars that were going to be allotted for them for enforcement. In order to check and make sure they're using these dollars, they have to use us, they have to give us a report that we forward to ODNR. ODNR requires that they give us a report on how they have done with the litter enforcement. ODNR is not all in favor of using dollars in this manner, although this is kind of a test case for, and something that they want to see whether it's going to work or not. So, it depends on the report coming back from ODNR whether we use these funds like that again. Is that acceptable?
No, thanks.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Chairman also moved for approval, including the $12,000 advance.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody for public comment? Please come to the podium and state your name.
I thought he wasn't coming.
Anchors away. My name is, still, Robert Kish, and this is another installment as Lorraine County Churns. I was just inspired by what Mr. Moore said. Perhaps we're voting the wrong way. Maybe it should be like a contest, where you have 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, and if you don't get 55%, that's it, you're tabled. A weighted vote. Anyhow, the quote that I have is, "If all mankind minus one were of one opinion and only one person to the contrary opinion, mankind would be no more justified in silencing that one person than he, if he had the power, would be justified in justifying, in silencing mankind." That has to do on liberty. It was written in 18... Maybe it should be like a contest where you have 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, and if you don't get 55%, that's it, you're tabled. A weighted vote. Anyhow, the quote that I have is, "If all mankind minus one were of one opinion and only one person to the contrary opinion, mankind would be no more justified in silencing that one person than he. If he had the power, would be justified in justifying and silencing mankind." That has to do on liberty. It was written in 1859. I think it's to still be true if liberty is to continue in America. I was not at liberty to light a flame today, for I had planned on lighting this candle, which is timed to burn for three minutes, my allotted time. So, I won't burn the candle today. However, and I forgot to start my watch, so I don't know. I don't have over my three minutes of that. But I was reading... I was reading an article in a paper that I would have thought I wrote it, or I had stated it. It said, "We can see something once and not absorb it." I like to see things more than once. When I saw it, I have not established an opinion about it at this time. And I was writing the paper, and I said, you know, I feel just that way about the tapes I haven't seen. But I, too, would have liked to have been at that meeting to have seen the viewing of this tape. I would like to be able to see it on file at the library, the same as the tapes of these meetings, so that people could go to the library and see these things. Now, the one part about the tape that nobody has even mentioned, this was not just about Lorraine County. This was about other approaches in other areas, other governments, and how they see and have handled problems, and other ways of doing things, so perhaps we can get some inspiration, not just, how would I say, criticizing and only viewing one small portion of this film. In other words, if we see something that's being done better elsewhere, let's steal their idea. I don't care if we're not first, just as long as we wind up not going broke in the process. Thank you.
Hey, Bob, can I ask you something?
Yes.
I couldn't let you leave without asking. You actually got a personalized T-shirt.
Yes, personalized.
Can you explain what's out?
Seven Cs. O-U-T?
Yeah, what?
That's older, useless taxpayer.
Okay. Every time I've asked, I've always been... I forget why I did.
Well, it has to do with CYA and...
No, we understand. I appreciate it. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate your input.
No, I'm glad to educate.
Can I get a T-shirt?
This is a one of a kind.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else have any public comments? Seeing none, I moved to adjourn.
I'll second.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mrs. Vancy?
Hi.
Which one?
Betty, I thank you.